Eliminate a portion or portions of the building. I think to include our large fleet and evidence Bay Area from the project. And we've had much discussion about that, and we realize that that actual garage which houses a mezzanine with the generators and the power structure for the entire complex is pretty much the nucleus of the whole complex.
Mm-hmm.
And it's very much a part of everything, not to mention that's where the armory is being housed. We don't want an armory in the public safety building because of the explosives. It's going to be housed separately back in the garage area. That's also going to be the area where the crime scene processing will be done on all vehicles that are brought into the Y Comico County Sheriff's Office. And just Friday in a meeting with Madam State's Attorney, Jamie Dykes, she talked about the enormous amount of pending felony cases here in Y Comico County, even during this COVID-19 pandemic. And in front of two senators last Friday, she attributed the bulk of that to the work being done by the men and women of the Y Comico County Sheriff's Office, specifically our community action team, which was formed to combat the opioid crisis here in the county. We were busier now than we've ever been here in this county. I think everybody here knows that we have outgrown our current building, which is 13,000 square feet. This new proposed building is approximately 48,000 square feet, 58,000 square feet if you include the garage, which is now 10,000 square feet. We have done everything we believe we can possibly do to cut costs. And in this 21st century, I think we have collectively come to the conclusion that you cannot build a public safety complex in this 21st century without a garage, without a garage. Imagine building a brand-new public safety complex without a garage, without a building, to house the power center for the building itself, not to mention the vehicles that we are required to have under roof. A quartermaster and a fleet manager working at the sheriff's office has to have a shop, got to have a building.
Sheriff, when you say the power source of the building, what do you mean?
The mezzanine area is where the generators are going to be for the public safety complex itself.
You mean the...
They're going to be inside the mezzanine area of the shop. That's going to be the power...
For the building, they're not building it within the building itself, they're going to put it in the garage?
We have, yes.
I mean, it's been designed like that.
The generator itself will not be in the garage. The generator will be outside, but all of the switchgear for the generator will be on the mezzanine along with the air handlers, the main power distribution center, and some plumbing. The generator will be outside, but all the switchgear is planned to be in the mezzanine. It's out of the way, but we can still get to it and service it. Without the mezzanine area, we would have to not redesign, but we would have to come up with some appendage just to house the physical plant of the facility, the air handlers, the switchgear, some of the plumbing installation. So it's not just by cutting the garage off, we're actually going to have to add on to the building to have space for the equipment that would have been in the garage.
You can continue, Sheriff.
The letter that was sent and dated on November 15, 2020, that has been forwarded, I believe, to each member of the Y Comico County Council, covers in great detail the depth that we have gone to try to cut costs in this particular project. And I can tell you, it's been a very concerted effort on behalf of everybody's seat at the table, as well as Mann's Woodward Studios, to create a building that will obviously facilitate law enforcement operational effectiveness in this county. And I have prepared a lengthy list of things that we now have primary investigative responsibility over here in this county that we did not have when I took over 14 years ago. And I don't want to go through the whole list, but I want to, if I could, highlight a few of those.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the Y Comico County Sheriff's Office, when I was elected 14 years ago, did not conduct any accident investigation here in the county at all. They were handled by the Maryland State Police or the Salisbury City Police Department. Shortly after my election, I sent a letter to the Maryland State Police Barrett Commander here in Salisbury indicating that the Y Comico County Sheriff's Office would assume primary investigative responsibility of all secondary road accidents here in the county, and we do that.
Or Mike, can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Or why did we do that? I mean, I know this isn't necessarily relevant in what we're doing, but...
Councilman McCain, that's a great question. I'm so glad you asked that. There was a lot of pressure under my previous administration. There was a lot of pressure by the Maryland State Police for the sheriff's office to assume that role. And for years, my predecessor said, "That is not what we're going to do. That is the job of the Maryland State Police." As soon as I was elected, I was asked by the state police commander if I would consider doing that. I told them I would consider doing that if they would put another investigator in the Child Advocacy Center from the Maryland State Police here in Salisbury. Also thought it would be nice to have deputies being viewed in a greater role of helping people at the scene of an accident, assisting people at the scene of an accident. And I wanted to be more well-rounded, not just criminal investigators, but good accident investigators as well, because they did not traditionally take a role in any type of accident investigation. I thought it was only fair that if we wanted to be viewed as a full-service law enforcement agency, we would also assume the role as accident investigators, reconstruction investigators, traffic homicide investigators. We got our feet wet by assuming the role of traffic investigators and working wrecks. We now have a full-service traffic homicide investigation unit, complete with total stations, and we get called upon by people all over the region to assist in traffic homicide investigations. Before, we had to rely on the state police to bring a homicide investigator in from across the state just to investigate our most serious and fatal motor vehicle collisions. We now do that ourselves. We're called upon because of our level of expertise in doing that. We have a number of advanced accident investigators and traffic homicide investigators now here in Y Comico County.
Yeah, and I appreciate that answer, and we do have a great team that does that and so forth. I guess, and I don't want to get off our subject here because our subject's the public safety building, but our charter says that the role of the sheriff's office is to protect the courts of Y Comico County, it has a period. It just kind of ends there. And, you know, and we certainly have morphed into our, you know, our criminal investigations
Yes, sir.
and our traffic investigations, et cetera. And, you know, and the state police, I'm sure they're glad to relinquish those duties.
You know, they're thrilled. Honestly, Mr. McCain, I would like to say that the Y Comico County Sheriff's Office has taken the lead across the state in doing all this, but the truth of the matter is sheriff's offices across the state have had to step up to the plate and take a much greater role in traditional law enforcement than they ever have because the Maryland State Police, when I came on the job as a trooper in 1984, we had 1,740 troopers across the entire state. Today, they have less than 1,300 troopers protecting and controlling the entire state. The state police cannot keep up, and the state police will tell you that they cannot keep up. In fact, the state police, and have been now for several years, are entertaining going strictly to highway patrol because they cannot keep up. That's not saying they will because they do a fantastic role. We have a great collaborative relationship with the troopers here in this county, and I would miss that if they were to go strictly to highway patrol, but they cannot keep up. And we've had to step up to the plate and take a much greater role in criminal and traffic enforcement here in this county. We've had to.
Sheriff, I remember when you and Ernie Leatherberry came before the council and announced that that was the process that was going to take place within the next year during that time period, probably 2009.
Absolutely. That's been at least 11 or 12 years ago.
Yeah, and even at that point in time, Ernie, I don't know what his title is, what's his rank?
He's the Deputy Superintendent of the Maryland Natural Resource Police right now.
Well, at the time, Ernie...
He was a lieutenant at the time.
Yeah, Lieutenant Leatherberry had specifically said they were doing this all across the state of Maryland in Y Comico, it was just simply one of the, one of many.
You know, and I know the state police, particularly a lot of the troopers, don't want to be pushed out of their role, and many of them don't want to be highway patrol, but there are many who do, you know? And we have a very, very important role in this county to fulfill, and we're struggling to do it, but we gladly do it. And it's very important to recognize that we are certainly doing a much larger area of responsibility in this county than we ever have in terms of criminal and traffic enforcement in Y Comico County.
And Mr. McCain brings up a good point about the charter. Maybe we need to massage the charter to make corrections as to what your job description and duties are with the sheriff's department to update it.
It's no different than the DUI program. Historically, any police officer in this county, if they were to arrest someone for DUI, you would have to take an individual to the Maryland State Police Barrett to blow into the intoxicimeter. And now we have our own intoxicimeter program at the Y Comico County Sheriff's Office, first time ever. And we process our own DUI suspects at the Y Comico County Sheriff's Office. And you have to send these individuals to intoxicimeter school to learn how to operate these very sensitive instruments, but we have that. And as you all well know, the MRAP that we currently have at the Y Comico County Sheriff's Office is required by the 1033 program to be housed at a concealed location. It cannot be vulnerable to the public. It can't be able to walk by and view it and see it, cannot be out for exhibition purposes, has to be concealed. And we kept it, we've kept it for the first several years at the Maryland State Police Hangar here in Salisbury until Pate Matthews became our DGS supervisor, and we were able to get some additional space at the current Y Comico County Sheriff's Office where we could house the MRAP in there. But to get it in and out, it takes a little bit of work, but we can do it. But we currently got it housed at the sheriff's office. We wanted to have it there.
Okay. Captain?
Sheriff, if I would only add, I appreciate the fact that you took the time and Mann's Woodward took the time to prepare the letter with the explanation because I also was considering or questioning about the necessity to have the garage. I think they addressed that very well. And I think they also addressed the issue as far as escalating costs. You know, I think something I may have overlooked is that when, I think it was Crosby came here two years ago, and at that time, they gave us a really escalated price of what this is going to cost, and we said, "That's never going to work." It's too... Well, here again, we've gone back again, we've gone to a second firm, and they've again said, "Look, this is the reality, that is what this costs." And so I'm okay with it. I think that the last thing we want to do is start hedging as far as public safety is concerned when you're talking about a building of this importance. Any particular errors you might try to make in micromanaging this could cost you a lot in the endgame. So I'm okay with it. I think, you know, I've looked at it, I've vetted it, and I appreciate you taking the time to be so thorough.
I appreciate it, Mr. McCain. You know, I would be redundant if I repeated a number of things that have already been addressed in this letter from Mann's Woodward. As you said, I think they've done an awesome job explaining why it's so important that the garage be a part of this public safety complex.
And I think we know, we've heard from Acton County Executive Sota and our Finance Director Pam Olman. We recognize what we're up against, we recognize it, but I think they carefully vetted the numbers, and I really appreciate the work they did and they shared with us this morning. So, you know, I feel, they feel comfortable moving forward this project, so I think we're good with that.
Awesome. You don't have much of your support, and the support the council means to us. And I'm so extremely proud of the great work that the men and women, the Y Comico County Sheriff's Office, is doing in this county. I'm thrilled to death to be put into a position that I'm trusted to lead the sheriff's office because we have a first-class operation here. I'm so proud of the men and women. Do a great job.
Any more council comments?
Yeah, I got a question. And I want to frame this with, I mean, your comment you just made, I agree 100%. You know, we got a first-class operation that we're very proud of in the county. The, but getting back to the building, I know the last time we met, one of the big questions had to do with the facade, and the front facade, and, I mean, everything we've been given here is just all about the garage, but we talked about several things. I mean, the garage was one of the items that some people brought up, and I know there was questions about the front facade, you know, I mean, the amount of glass and because of the hardening of the building, I mean, that's obviously a significant cost. And their response was, it lets light in, but it's like, you know, the irony of that was, I can't remember, was it the same guys that this came from? Was that a different group that presented that to us the last time that were here with you?
First group was Crosby and Associates out of Cambridge. But I believe we have had that conversation with Mann's Woodward.
It was the guys that were with you the last time.
Yes, Mann's Woodward, yes, sir.
But the irony of that is they're, on their title page of their presentation, they showed this, you know, what they call the modern-day law enforcement office for the 21st century, and showed a photo of it, and, you know, this is what they're supposed to look like, but that doesn't look like ours. I mean, that one was probably 2/3 brick and so, you know, and it had glass in the upper levels that let light in and so forth, but I mean, our picture, our facade is totally different from that facade, but that was their modern-day building. So, I mean, I know that was one of the questions we had brought up, you know, it was at an area where, you know, some dollars could be saved. You know, I am struggling with the fact that, you know, since we've met and so forth, and there were concerns and so forth, that we've just come back with a story, the exact same number. You know, I mean, I mean, it was not some, somewhere we're able to find something? You know, the fact we just come back with the exact same number when we got other, I mean, we just earlier just heard Warwick, for example, and, you know, he just got the capital improvement budget, you know, they got a whole building, but they've just taken it right off the capital improvement budget, you know, just because of where we stand right now. So, yeah, I'm still kind of trying to get there, you know, but like I said, I guess my question, so I guess not to get too many, throw too many things out, but I see Pate looking at me with a response, but I think it's to the facade question you're trying to respond to.
I understand your question, but we have worked with these guys from day one, keep the price down. That has been the driving factor in every meeting we've had. The hardened structure goes up to a certain height, and then, yes, it does turn back to glass to regular glass. Their theory, their philosophy in that is the glass will provide energy savings during certain periods of the day. It also provides a more friendly work environment to have natural light. Those are the considerations that the architects see that you and I don't really think about, is how are these people going to be comfortable in this building for eight to 12 hours a day? So a lot of that was the driving force in the design of the facade. Yeah, it's, it's pretty, it's, you know, it's a modern building, but I think if we did away with some of the hardened structure of the glass and replaced it with block, I don't think we'd have enough money difference to even consider it relevant, to be honest with you.
We have had that conversation, not just with our engineers, but with Pate as well. And Pate brings so much to the table. His knowledge, his input at these meetings have been invaluable for all of us, and he's so right. They have concluded, and he has agreed, that we can go with the blocks, but it's going to make minimal difference in the cost. And they gave us every reason in the world as to why we should stick with the glass. As he said, we've got, our dispatchers are working 12-hour shifts. We wanted to make sure they had natural sunlight coming in. You can imagine being behind four walls with no natural sunlight for 12 hours at a time. And he said, "This is minimal cost." And we're only talking about bullet-resistant glass up to a certain level than it's all natural glass.
I remember one of the previous presentations, I think the architects said that, when they showed the facade of the building, they said they didn't want it to look like your everyday police department, and so they designed it differently. And now you're saying that the cost isn't that much difference?
It is not. It is not.
I'm just concerned about safety. I think somebody brought up about the glass being bulletproof, and just want to make sure it's a safety issue, too.
It's bullet resistant to a certain height.
Okay.
And above that, the line of fire is irrelevant to anybody that would be in the building.
Nobody would be up there.
Right, right.
Any more comments?
Sheriff Lewis, Mr. Matthews, sorry, I had a question for you. Could you, could you please explain the difference between a sheriff's office and a public safety building?
Well, as you well know, the sheriff's office is the office of the public. It's an elected sheriff's office. It belongs to Y Comico County. I just occupied for four years at a time as an elected official, as opposed to a police department. I assume that's what you're talking about. When we first started looking at building a new sheriff's office and public safety complex, we realized that in order to financially do this, we'd have to do it in phases. Phase one being the Y Comico County Sheriff's Office, phase two being the emergency management system here in Y Comico County. But it is the office of sheriff, it is obviously the office of every citizen here in Y Comico County. I'm just fortunate enough to occupy the position, and we are extremely busy. The office of sheriff has exclusive jurisdiction over evictions, as a lot of people know that, we're very much in, but we have exclusive jurisdiction over all sex offender registry here in the county. There are many things that are unique to the office of sheriff, so it is different than any police department, and it is, it's headed up by an elected official as opposed to an appointed official, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's it. I've had citizens ask me, "Why are we giving the sheriff a new office?" And I think you gave a very good explanation for citizens to understand the difference between just your office and a public safety building. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any more comments? Sheriff, do you have anything else?
No, sir. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you all, really appreciate it, and stay safe during these holidays.
Thank you.
So next, we have a discussion with the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone's got to sit at the table. Come on up, Micah.
Look, you're going to be the star of the show. You got your computer.
Dr. Handlon.
Hey, Don.
Afternoon, welcome, everyone. Thank you for attending. If you all could introduce yourselves and your positions, and could somebody introduce who's on Zoom and who's in the audience? So, Mr. Stauffer, can we start with you?
Sure. My name's Micah Stauffer for Y Comico County Public Schools. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Okay.
Gene Malone, Chairman of the Board of Education.
Lisa...
Lisa Ashby, Director of Planning and Construction for Y Comico County Public Schools.
Donna Handlon, Superintendent of Schools. And we have with us today, in the audience, we have the Vice Chair of the Board, Mike Murray, Alan Brown, John Palmer, and Ann Sathousky, and then through Zoom, I believe, we have Don Fitzgerald and Tanya Laird Lewis.
I saw Tom, okay. And who wants to start? I think you all have a presentation.
We have several.
Several.
So we have an agenda if...
Sure.
So just an overview, President Dodd, good afternoon. Thank you for having us for our quarterly joint meeting.
Yes.
We wanted, Mrs. Ashby and Mr. Stauffer will work together to provide a presentation on the capital improvement program.
Okay.
Then we'll share a summary of our legislative audit, and we'll end with just an update on our return-to-school action plan.
Yes, good.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Ashley?
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Looks like our fonts are a little bit off, so we'll just kind of roll with it. On behalf of the Superintendent and the Board, I've been asked to be here today to give an overview of the Board's capital program. This was a little bit of an effort because it's a combination of about four different presentations that have been given over the course of the last four months. So we'll try to get through it. Next slide. So three things we want to focus on today, the main components of the program. Proactive planning leads to better budgets, and in order to implement stronger projects. And they're sized accordingly. A lot of time is invested in planning, the budget to go along with that in order to deliver those projects. So the overall capital improvement program consists of two integral, oh, sorry, next slide. There we go. The Board's capital improvement program consists of two integral components, the first part being the Educational Facility Master Plan, or EFMP. That's assessing the issues affecting school facilities, and it's the foundation of the program. Data is gathered, analyzed, and used to prioritize facility needs. And the second part is the Capital Improvement Plan, or the CIP. That establishes project timelines along with anticipated projected funding needs. The Board's EFMP and CIP are both available on the Board's website. In addition, they were reviewed and detailed in separate board work sessions, which are also available on the website. Next slide. So the EFMP is kind of broken out into some key elements, special initiatives, projected enrollments, specifically capacity, facility need indexes, and facility needs that are requiring capital expenditures. Next slide. So we have several data indicators that we utilize to analyze facility needs. Within the EFMP is a scorecard for each facility, and it highlights these key indicators. Parkside's here for an example. The first being the Facility Condition Index, FCI, that measures the physical conditions of a facility. The Program Index measures the ability of a building to meet instructional program needs from a space standpoint. Facility Quality Index, FQI, is a combination of FCI and PI, and it's used as a quick tool to look at an overall building quality. And then there is Utilization, which measures a school's capacity. Next slide. So these are the two facility need indexes. The first one is for major capital. There's three weighted categories. FQI is weighted the highest. It also includes utilization and FTE. The goal is to address schools with the highest number of students combined with condition needs. The Facility Needs Index, which is the orange one on the right, is more focused on condition and utilizes utilization. FCI is weighted the highest, focusing on the systemic components of each school. The goal is to address schools with the highest systemic needs in order to keep a building from moving higher on the capital improvement or the green side. The Major Capital Improvement List often correlates to the systemic list with many of the same project needs identified as top priorities. Could you just click one more time? So where does this data come from? Next slide. So with so many competing priorities across 24 buildings, it's important to leverage limited funding as efficiently as possible. Could you click one more time? So although we've mentioned all of these indicators... One more click. Today, we're really going to focus on the Facility Condition Index, or FCI. Our team is tasked with prioritizing these various needs to... Could you go back one, please? Thanks. Our team is tasked with prioritizing these various needs to address building conditions without sacrificing program. The challenge is, will this be sustainable moving forward? In the interest of time, we're going to focus on the Facility Condition Index today. Next slide. So FCI comes from Third-Party Independent Facility Condition Assessments. The Board initiated assessments starting back in 2008. The reassessments were done over the past two years. The buildings highlighted in green were reassessed with onsite inspections. The buildings highlighted in blue, the newest schools, were assessed based upon as-built drawings and specifications, and that was done to save some money. Beaver Run, Mardella, and Fruitland Primary were not assessed due to significant project needs already identified in the capital plan. Next slide. So Jamie Clark with Accruent, that's the Board's Facility Condition Assessment Consultant, along with our Facilities Planner, gave a more detailed overview of this process and assessment data at last week's board meeting, and is available for viewing on the Board's website. Next slide. So the assessment team was composed of licensed architects and engineers, with the exception of the newest schools, they were physically visited, and identifying each system and documenting its remaining useful life. Next slide. All data is tied to established building standards, as highlighted here. Two of the standards we want to highlight is RS Means, which is updated annually, and it's utilized as a minimum construction cost data. Also, the Building Owners and Managers Association, BOMA, is utilized for life expectancy of building systems and equipment. Click one more time, and then next slide, please. Click one more time and then next slide, please. Click once. So we're going to quickly go through current replacement value, what that is and how it's calculated. Again, Facility Condition Index, what is it and what's its benchmark? Next. The requirement categories and priorities, last but not least. Cost estimates, what's included, and an adjustment factor. Next slide. So the current replacement value is the sum of an asset's system replacement values. And in our world, asset is a building. It's derived from RS Means construction data, and it's localized to the nearest major city. So for us, that's Baltimore. Next slide. So FCI is a simple ratio of the cost of the asset's improvements, or the building improvement needs, identified as needed and in the year requirements divided by the asset's calculated replacement value. So it's an indicator of condition and can be used to benchmark along consistent industry standards. Click again. So as you can see, the lower the FCI, the better of the building's overall condition. And for several years, we've been kind of using this green, yellow, red approach so that you could understand, green's better, yellow's caution, and red is there are significant investments. So again, if there's one key takeaway in this scenario, FCI, the lower, the better. So the requirement categories and priorities, the categories are kind of the Y, integrity, regularity, and optimization. You can see those other issues there, as well as prioritize when. So there are four, four clear categories, currently critical, potentially critical, necessary, not yet critical, and not timed based. Next slide. So the cost estimates are developed using, as we've mentioned, the RS Means. The VFA facility is the database by which our information is located. It's adjusted by a location factor to account for either decreases or increases in the material and labor for local markets, which can fluctuate greatly. The base cost estimates include material and labor to renew. So it's just, it's just contracting costs. So the cost estimates and the adjustment factors. So the base RS Mean data includes single trade. The final estimates include a 1.61 adjustment factor to account for general contracting overhead and profit for capital project costs. So for us, that's 1.61. Next slide. So what do we own? This is breaking it out by the elementary, middle, and high school level. So we just want to note, for those that are counting, we have 24 school buildings. Two are excluded, which is Beaver Run and Mardella, because Beaver Run is currently being replaced, and Mardella is currently under design. However, the James, James M. Bennett is a standalone facility, so it shows up as a, a building in its, of itself. So you're looking at around 2 million square feet at a current replacement value of 677 million. And then FCI cost or five-year needs are a little over 162 million, and we'll show you how that breaks out in a little bit. So overall, Wacomiko is at 0.24 for its FCI across the portfolio, again, with the exclusion of those two buildings. Next slide. So what are those needs? As you can see, building code and life safety issues make up about a tenth of a percent of five-year needs. That's not uncommon. Priority three items make up 65% of overall needs, which are items that have about three to five years remaining. And then most of the items fall under the beyond useful life category, which is not unexpected as, you know, things get deferred over time. Next slide. So of the current year one needs, 15.3 million fall in the exterior enclosure and interior construction systems groups. Those are things like window replacements. If you could just click. So that's highlighting those two pieces there. If you could click again. So at the bottom, the Priority One and Priority Two combined make up about 35% of our five-year needs, which also falls into exterior enclosure, electrical, and interior systems groups. If you could click again. So electrical systems alone make up about 31% of overall needs. That includes a lot of things. It'll include things like fire alarms, lighting, switchgear, which is not uncommon. The last two projects we did, Parkside, as well as Delmar, we ended up having to replace the entire switchgear for those, both of those buildings. Next slide, please. So here's just overview of everything. 24 school facilities. Just keep in mind, this data excludes any program deficiencies. So overall, our portfolio area is about 2.25. This does include all 24 buildings. Total average age, 31 years. You can see it broken out by elementary, middle, and high, as well as we have a combined elementary, middle, and a combined middle and high school. Those average out to 41. So for 2020 replacement value, it's a little over 720 million. That would be to replace facilities to current systems operation. So if it had a boiler, it's replacing the boiler, whether it was, you know, efficient or not at that time. The total replacement value is a little over a billion. That's to replace facilities to current systems operation, as well as taking into consideration additional costs like design and overhead and profit for contractors. Next slide. Or just click once. So good news, there were facility condition improvements. Next slide. So for Northwestern Elementary, just to, we highlighted four buildings, just to give you a rough idea of how the data had improved. There were some HVAC upgrades, mechanical renovations, door and hardware replacements, and lift station work. If you could click once. So we saw an overall 23-point improvement. So it still stayed in the yellow, but it significantly shifted from that yellow-red line back to the yellow-green line. At Pittsville, we had conducted multiple, multiple systemic renovations, as well as HVAC, and did some upgrades to the media center. If you could click once. We saw an overall 40-point improvement, which moved us from the red to the yellow. Next slide, please. Parkside High School, we were there, I think, two to three years. I lost track now. Anyways, multiple HVAC, auditorium seating and lighting, chillers and controls, as well as some ADA upgrades. If you could click once, please. So we saw an overall improvement of 37. As you can see, Parkside was significantly in the red and is now in the mid-yellow, which is a significant improvement. We've also seen a lot of energy efficiency improvements there. And then click again, please. So we recently completed Delmar Elementary School. Thankfully, we completed that project four months early, which is great. We saw an overall 36-point improvement at Delmar as well. And what's interesting, Parkside and Delmar saw very significant improvements, and they're also about the same era. They're, they were 1970s buildings. Next slide, please. So just analyzing from an FCI basis, there's about a backlog of 8.9 million. Those are things that may not have failed yet, but they're showing as if they should be renewed within the system. Total renewal and repair over the next five years is estimated at $162 million. It's important to note that the software looks at a fiscal year calendar, so a five-year outlook is out to 2026. Next slide, please. Okay, so there's a lot going on in this one, so bear with me. It's a quick look at just three funding scenarios across the entire portfolio. The blue line represents the funding necessary to maintain the current portfolio FCI of 0.24. If you could click, please. So on average, that would be 20.2 million dollars per year. Remember, that doesn't include Beaver Run or Mardella. So the green line represents funding at 2.5% of the current replacement value. If you could click again, please. So that represents about 16.9. Obviously, it fluctuates over time, so that's an average number. The red line represents funding to reduce FCI, basically try to improve it by half. So to go from 0.24 to 12, which would get you into the green category. If you could click again. So that's the average annual funding would be about 24.3. So one more click, please. Given projected funding shortages, it's important to note that the buildings will continue to age, deferred maintenance grows, CIP progress continues to slow. That'll just be an ongoing thing as COVID and other pieces are kind of hindering progress on the capital side. Next slide, please. So back to the master plan, just highlighting again, special initiatives combined with the facility needs indexes, as well as projected enrollments, are what we're utilizing to identify projected capital program needs, capital project needs over the next five years. This becomes the foundation of the top priorities identified in the capital improvement plan and budget. Next slide, please. So the CIP and budget, we'll quickly review the top 2022 project priorities, as well as recap what we were able to accomplish. Again, just a reminder, this is part two of the overall program. It includes the current year FY 2022 requests, as well as future project needs. Next slide, please. So these are the top three. Beaver Run, which you're all familiar with, and the two allocations, one to the state, one to the county. It's our final request to both. Mardella, schematic design is currently underway. That's the allocation request to the state, as well as to the county, and then Westside Intermediate Roof. It's important, if you could click one more time, please. It's important to note that these projects have remained the same for the past three years. Unfortunately, it's created deferrals of other projects. However, we're pleased that the county executive is recommending, in the proposed FY 22 CIP, that Westside Intermediate Roof be funded as Pago, so that we can execute this as a summer 2021 project, as it's been deferred by the state for two to three fiscal years now. Next slide, please. We won't spend much time in here, but these are the next eight project priorities that round out the top 10. As you can see, they're primarily roofs, HVAC, and some security and access control improvements. There are many more projects. All of those can be found in the full CIP, which is available on the website and was submitted to the county earlier in September. Next slide, please. So Dr. Handlin, the Board felt it was important to relay what's been happening at the state regarding school construction funding, and I'm sure you've heard some of these things. So what we're starting to experience is overall less state funding. If you could click, please. They've eliminated the use of QZAB, SSGP, and HSFF. These are all acronyms that if you want to know what they are, I'll be happy to share them. But we, these are several sources we relied on for smaller-scale projects, and those have been absorbed or eliminated. The IAC continues to revise the eligibility of projects, as well as recommending regarding funding, recommendations regarding funding. If you could click, please. So last year in fiscal 2021, some of the issues we saw that LEAs were having to appeal for additional square footage. They were limiting funding towards systemics, and they were deferring more planning approvals. So we were very grateful to receive planning approval for Mardella last year. The next thing we're seeing is a cost, more of a cost shift to the county, especially for systemics. And what we're finding is it's liable to put more counties in a position of having to forward fund for major capital. Next slide, please. So as a result of the 21st Century School Facilities Act, it established an assessment and funding work group. They issued a report in December of 2019, which is available on their website. They requested a one-year extension due to the status of the statewide facility condition assessments. So all the information we just reviewed, the state is now working towards having condition assessments done statewide. They plan on initiating that process in January. So the work groups, the work group is not going to reconvene until those assessments are available, so that they can discuss future funding strategies. Next slide, please. These were some of the scenarios they looked at, a 10-year average, 10-year average inflation, formulaic funding. They described allowing LEAs to bank funds, so if they did not have enough projects to meet their minimum allocation, they could bank it. Just for reference, Wacomiko will probably never be in that position. We can always use more than what our minimum allocation. So this is on hold pending those facility assessments. Next slide, please. So the current CIP funding strategy. So the IAC is starting to implement kind of a 10-year rolling average approach. So we're just highlighting here in that triangle what the funding work group was looking at. You see at the top, 12.1 was what our 10-year average inflation adjusted was. Last year's fiscal year, they used a rolling 10-year average, which had predicted 9.4. We actually received 9.1. The current fiscal year, FY 2022, they were looking, they are looking at midpoint between 10-year average and formulaic enrollment. We're anticipating to receive anywhere between 8.3 and 10.8, and I'll get to that in a little bit. Wealth, wealth-adjusted enrollment base could be as low as 5.7, with just straight enrollment based at 4.4. It's important to note that the IAC approves funding in rounds. Specifically, 75% of the governor's traditional CIP budget was just recently approved. It included an allocation of 4.9 million for Beaver Run. However, it's projected to receive a total of 10.8 by the 100% allocation. So they just approved the 75% allegation. 90% will be done approximately in March, and 100% in May or June. So we find the general public thinks that things aren't going to happen when it's a multi-step process, so it's something that we have to continually monitor. Next slide, please. So House Bill 1, the Bill to Learn Act, many of you have probably heard about it. This is just a quick overview of it. It was proposed to be 2.2 billion. From what we're hearing, that will probably be reduced. If you could click once, please. So Wacomiko has lumped into the all other counties, which is 11.5% of that 2.2 billion. So we're competing with 17 other LEAs for that pot of money. Next slide, please. So just a quick breakdown of how the 2.2 could potentially be distributed. If you could click once. So right now, this funding is proposed to be managed and authorized by the Maryland Stadium Authority. So 1.3% comes off the top for their management fees of $26 million. If you could click again. So 87.2% of that 2.2 billion is around 1.7 billion. That will go to the six LEAs identified in green there. If you could click again, please. 11.5%, as we mentioned, those 17 LEAs, Wacomiko being one, is competing for $230 million out of that 2.2. Next slide. So if there's any takeaway, what we would like to share today is, when you look at what the funding work group is doing, along with the current IAC 10-year average, we're probably looking at overall less state funding. So House Bill 1 is going to become a temporary bridge in the short term. Next slide. Good news is, we are still accomplishing things. This is, although the capital funding was more limited, the Board has made a concerted effort to keep smaller-scale projects moving forward through capital outlay. Here are several that were done, and they show up as complete in the FY 2021 summary in the current FY 2022 Capital Improvement Plan. So a lot of these were done with other funding sources, including Outlay. Some of them were done with the QZAB, HSFF, and SSGB funds we talked about earlier that are no longer a source. But if there's one thing we do, if there's a funding source available, we're going to apply and do the best we can to get those funds. Next slide. So another good news was for Priority Two, which is Mardella. We were able to save in our request to the county in FY 2022, overall 3.6 million on the overall project. Mardella has its challenges, but this was good news in the short term. So in FY 21, you can see the overall cost split between the state and the county, which took a shift. And we're trying to hang on to that overall $71.8 million project budget. There are several variables involved in how the state calculates your eligibility. They've shifted some things around about when you lock into funding. The state cost per square foot fluctuates every year. They're making changes to state eligible gross square footage. And specifically for Mardella, you know, we're dealing with a, a portion of demolition, as well as new construction. And, you know, projected enrollments are also taken into consideration. So these variables are updated annually. So this is what the picture is this year. It could change. It could change next year, but this is what we're looking at for this year. So, with the exception of the overall cost share, which is updated anywhere from two to three years, all of these other items are revised each year. So, we're, if you could click once, please. We'll have to reassess in FY 2023. Next slide.
Liesel, before you get too far.
Yes.
Just a quick question, because we got the CIP budget earlier today from Mr. Posoda. So, I'm kind of looking at your numbers and their numbers. And my, my public education math isn't quite adding up. So, I guess the other question is, you know, I guess, is everyone in concert there? I mean, because this is supposed to conclude Mardella, finishing a Beaver Run in the roof. But, you know, I mean, their total five-year from the board is 35 million, but your Mardella to the county was 35 million. So...
I'll have to look, but we...
Yeah. I mean, it might be a hard answer right now.
County Executive and the Finance Director. So, I'll just have to go back and take a look at it.
From our meetings, we definitely believe we are in concert, so I'm not sure what, where the numbers vary.
Mr. McCain, I do know that they are most concerned about FY 22, and I think our numbers are, are in alignment with, when you look at just FY 22.
Thank you.
So, back to overall project schedule. Another thing we had to look at to maintain that original FY 2021 total project budget, we had to figure out a way to condense the design process in order to avoid a year of construction cost escalation. So, with the recommendation of the School Building Commission, we're going to be bringing the construction manager on board earlier to assist with design decisions so that we can execute those hopefully more efficiently. We're pleased to report the architect and engineer team has been hired and is working on schematic design, and schematic design is the first of three major design phases. Next slide. You can go again. Okay. So, this is for informational purposes, and it's been reviewed with the School Building Commission, and it's been reviewed with the County Executive's Office and Finance Staff. So, what we wanted to point out earlier is that 10-year average funding approach. So, if we wanted to look at a worst-case scenario, if we took the projected wealth-adjusted base formula, which was the circle around that 5.7 we pointed out earlier, if the state were to spread out and only flat fund at that amount of money, we would be relying on forward funding from the county. So, we just want to connect the dots of what we were talking about earlier. We don't know what that will be. It's just, we wanted to be transparent about it so that everybody was on the same page as we were moving forward with the, with the project. If you could click once, please. Oh, it's, never mind, it's already there. So, yeah. So, you know, worst-case scenario, you're looking at forward funding those last few fiscal years from the state, the county would be reimbursed. So, when I say House Bill 1 is most likely a bridge, is can we even get 17.4 million out of the House Bill 1 allocation? And if we could, then obviously we would propose that we use that as a bridge. But those memorandum of understandings and other pieces haven't all been worked out with, associated with House Bill, so we'll have to wait and see how that works out. Next slide, please. So, I'm sure many of you, if you're driving, you can even see it from Route 50, definitely from Old Ocean City. So, Beaver Run's going really well. It's expected to open to students in August of 2022. We will have some site work that will continue into the fall of 2022, and that's because, you know, we have a whole entire building to take down and then put parking and bus loops and such on top of that. So, that's going to skate into the new year. But the construction managers should come up with additional phasing plans. So, we're on track to hopefully have the building enclosed late spring, early summer. Next slide. That's all we had.
All right.
So, that was a lot of information.
It was a lot.
That was a lot of information. We just wanted you to have everything that had been provided to the board, and especially to make sure that, or to just emphasize how data-driven we are in making decisions about our public school construction program. So, any questions?
Does anybody have any questions or comments? I did get to go to Beaver Run to vote on November 3rd, and there's a lot of changes going on out there. Looking forward to seeing the finished product. And I would request that you invite us to some grand opening or tours of the buildings when they're completed. Joe, did you have a comment?
Not necessarily.
I saw you reaching for the mic.
I have a general comment. With what we've experienced with COVID and virtual, I know that we're going to see a big change in college level information, going to online learning.
Mr. Holloway.
I'm sorry. They won't give me a live mic, so I have to push the button. Anyway, they, I know we've seen colleges before COVID come along, you know, going to more virtual learning. Do you think there'll be any more of that, especially in the high school, as far as virtual learning, even after we get out of the COVID situation?
I do. I do, definitely. I think that this has forced us, if you will, to become much more confident in our use of technology, and there may be students who prefer to learn online. And so, I think that it will provide, there will be lots of opportunities for students to have a day of online learning or even a course at a time, where we can even combine resources with a teacher teaching a particular course online from students from various high schools. So, lots of opportunities, I think, are, have become more apparent. We also are on the Eastern Shore, the Eastern Shore ESMEC, the Eastern Shore of Maryland Education Consortium, which is the nine Eastern Shore counties are going to be piloting in the second semester of this year, and a regional online program with that very thing in mind, Mr. Holloway, that where we can continue to offer that kind of program to students beyond COVID.
So, do you see where there may be a change in the future as far as the bricks and mortar, you know, needs that we have, that, as far as that taking place, or?
That's, that's a very good question, because we don't know how many students will actually want to continue, you know, with a full online program. But I would hope that it will help some of our overcrowding in our schools now. So, for immediate needs, I don't think that we need to back off what our needs are because of any anticipated reduced number of students in our buildings that would cause us to have extra space at this point, but could be for the future. Sure.
It would appear to me, too, that one thing this has proven is that interaction is important to children, as much as education. So, I believe honestly, I think if, for the best of everybody, that they, they're going, they're going to be coming back to the bricks and mortar, period. Their parents are going to want them to come, because they have jobs. So, I don't think, no matter how it develops, no matter what we've learned, I think, over and all, over, over and above all else, we'll get back to the old, I said, the old, we'll get back to what was our old normal. And I think that's probably what we found to be the best results for all the kids. I did have one question on one of the slides you had up there that projected the 10 years. I don't know if you can do that. So, the one where you had the large spikes at the end? Not that guy. Hello, Don.
The one with the triangle, Mr. Khan?
Well, I guess the only thing I was going to say is that a lot of that projected to 2026, and then everything spiked after that. And we've had a discussion with, with our Finance Director and with John Posoda, and they've shared with us that 2026 is going to be a very precarious year for, for the county as a whole. A lot of that's going to depend on money that we're going to get back from the state for forward funding, probably in the tune of just under $50 million. And I'm assuming will probably, that'll probably work, because I don't think we've had problems with forward funding before and getting reimbursed. But I just wanted, I was just hoping that you all were aware as to what pages we were on, as to how critical things will be getting in 2026, so.
I think many of us actually watched that presentation as well.
Okay. Yep. Any more comments?
Very thorough. Unbelievably great work.
Can you go to the podium?
Dr. Hanlon, could Liesel briefly explain the difference between who we used to go to with our presentations, with the building commissioner, and the building commission, which was the governor, the treasurer, and the comptroller, and the new set of non-elected officials who are now making decisions for us?
John, can you introduce yourself for the record?
John Palmer, board member.
Thank you. Ms. Hanlon, Dr. Hanlon.
So, well, so what Mr. Palmer is referring to is about two to three years ago, the way the process would normally work, the inter-agency, they changed from inter-agency committee on public school construction to the inter-agency commission on public school construction. When it was the committee, it was a committee making recommendations to the Board of Public Works. So, that's the treasurer, the comptroller, and the governor. That was restructured. They created the commission versus the committee, which is similar to Wacomico School Building Commission. It's actually nine people, same number of people, very different experiences. However, there's not a separate appeal process, so all the decisions rest solely with the IAC, meaning that commission. So, appeals are made, made to them. And I think that's why they're working on more of a flat-based formula versus like a project merit-based formula, because they, they have less to deal with as well. So, I believe that addresses Mr. Palmer's differentiation.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? All right. Dr. Hanlon?
So, the next item on our agenda today, as promised, we want to review with you a summary of the legislative audit. Going to ask that Jesse come up and join us. This is Jesse Reed, our comptroller, who's going to share some information with you about the legislative audit. I will just tell you generally, before Jesse starts, how proud I am of the results of our legislative audit that we underwent, I'm not sure if that's the right word, but for eight months.
Yeah.
Last year, and I think it definitely shows our ability towards effectiveness and efficiency with financial management practices. So, Jesse, I will turn it over to you.
As he's getting straight, I'll just add a few, few details, just to kind of orient everybody to what exactly a legislative audit for a school system entails. The length of the audit, as Dr. Hanlon said, was eight months. It did include four to eight auditors on-site each day. The scope of the audit, although this type of audit is extremely comprehensive, we go through it once every six years. The objectives of the audit were to evaluate from 2015 to 2019 whether WCPS procedures and controls were effective in accounting for and safeguarding all the assets, and whether its policies provided for the efficient use of financial resources. So, the departments that were involved in Wacomico County Public Schools included our business support services, procurement, special education, student and family services, transportation, food services, facilities, planning and construction, and technology. And our last legislative audit was completed in 2014. At that time, we had 14 audit findings, and this time, we do have eight findings. So, since the last audit, all the counties in the state of Maryland have been audited, and their number of audit findings ranged from seven findings to 20 findings, with the average being just over 15. So, with eight findings, this time, we feel like we're moving in the right direction, and we're at the bottom of the scale as far as that goes for the other public school systems in Maryland. And I do want to note that the auditors on the findings page within the audit itself, which is located on our transparency portal, did indicate that the auditor's procedural review and testing disclosed no material weaknesses. So, so, no, no significant deficiencies, and identified no improprieties or misuse of funds, which we were, we were pleased about as well. The specific audit findings this time did include one procurement finding, one timekeeping finding, three IT findings, two transportation findings, and one user access finding for our systems programs. So, the senior auditor that spent that much time with us and his entire team were very complimentary of the cooperation from our staff and working with them throughout those eight months, as well as our success in complying with the fiscal procedures and our intention of always seeking to improve. So, I did want to ask Jesse to just kind of talk us through the eight audit findings in more detail, so you really have a good understanding of exactly what these findings included.
And feel, feel free to ask me questions as we go along, or wait till the end, whatever you prefer. So, the first finding dealt with intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreements, or ICPAs. These are contracts where we use other government contracts that have already gone through the bidding process. We do this because it saves us the cost and time of putting out a request for proposal since it's already been done by another government agency. While our procedure is legal and within, within all government guidelines, the Office of Legislative Auditors, or OLA, wanted us to create a checklist to use any time we utilize another government contract. This will provide documentation that we went behind and reevaluated the first government organization's specific bidding process to ensure that it was competitively bid and properly advertised to begin with. They want us to maintain these documents with the checklist, checklist as proof. We now have the checklist in place and are in the process of implementing it. We had been performing this reevaluation process on all government contracts prior to this audit, and we did document this. However, we did not have the documentation to the detail or format that the OLA wanted. The second finding dealt with time card approvals. We had some salaried employees that had not approved their time card on, time cards online. There's only a one-day window for employees to approve their time card online. We do require the employees to punch in every day that they work, but they must also approve their time card at the end of each pay period. This verification can be missed if an employee is sick, on vacation, or for some other reason neglects to take care of this process. However, we do have four levels of review and approval in total: the employee, the employee supervisor, the timekeeping editor at each site, and payroll. So, even though an employee may have neglected to approve his or her time card, there still would have been three other levels of review and approval. We upgraded our timekeeping system while the auditors were on-site, and employees now have the ability to approve their time card on their phone if they are not at their work site. They can also approve it on their computer or at a time clock. We have a report available for timekeeping editors that lets them see who has not approved their time card, so they can follow up with that staff that has not approved. Employees also get an email reminder with a copy going to the timekeeping editor if they do not approve their time card in a timely manner. The third finding was regarding a few financial systems users who had access to some screens that the auditor's team, they did not need access to. This finding was minor. It was not a situation where a purchasing employee had access to a payroll screen, but rather, a payroll employee that had access to a payroll screen that they just didn't use very often. To give you an example, we have three employees in our payroll department, and all three had access to a payroll deduction screen, but only two typically entered payroll deductions, so the auditor's team, the third payroll employee, did not need access. Although a few weeks after we made the recommended changes, we ended up having to add back some of the human resources and payroll screens that we'd initially taken away from them because they discovered they did actually need access to some of those screens. However, we are monitoring access rights closely for every employee and employee group. The fourth finding was related to information technology. The OLA wants us to strengthen our security on personally identifiable, identifiable information, or PII, social security numbers, credit card numbers, which we had begun to do prior to their visit. We now have a program that can identify PII and documents across all files so that we can make sure we are not storing unnecessary, unnecessary PII on our servers. We're also currently working on a policy and procedures for departments to follow regarding PII. Finding five was also related to information technology. The OLA wants us to strengthen our security activity monitoring by documenting our review of all reports regarding security and audit events for our information system applications. After the recommendation for strengthening our security event monitoring became a finding during the previous OLA audit, we created financial activity reports that were auto- emailed to the appropriate recipients based on the event. However, during this audit, we could show that we received the reports, but we did not have the documentation that the OLA wanted to prove that we reviewed the reports, which we did, we just didn't have, you know, the document, documentation. We plan to continue to perform these reviews and, moving forward, retain signed and dated documentation as proof of our review. The OLA also wants us to strengthen our password controls. We have implemented and will continue to finish adding two-factor authentication across all critical applications. That's where you receive an email or text in addition to adding your password. That's where you receive an email or text in addition to adding your password. We currently have eight-digit complex passwords for general users and are considering moving towards 12-digit passwords or higher, per the recommendation of the OLA. The OLA recommends that we not only move to 12-digit passwords, but also require users to create new passwords every three months instead of every four months, which is what we're doing now. We also routinely review the strength and complexity of system administration passwords for financial and student information systems, basing what we do on industry standards and practice. Finding six was also related to information technology. The OLA wanted us to relocate all publicly accessible servers to a separate network. These are servers that sit outside of our firewall, but have several additional layers of protection from unauthorized access. Where appropriate, we have begun and will continue to move these servers to virtual machine architectures, the cloud. One server to be moved first is located at James M. Bennett. This server helps deliver school update content to TV monitors throughout the school and helps post information to the school's website. We are in the planning and design stages for this project now. It should be noted that all this server sits outside the firewall. It has other security and access controls in place to protect it from unauthorized access. This server and others referenced in the audit are regularly under review. We also invest in a yearly contract for a consultant to attempt to access these servers in other parts of the WCPS network. This provides us with notifications of any weaknesses our network may have. To date, all of our network system reviews have been positive. Almost there. Seventh finding was related to transportation. The OLA wants us to continue to audit our bus routing practices and maintain the documentation as proof. Our transportation director has been auditing 100% of the routes each year prior to the OLA audit, but the documentation we maintained was not as detailed as what the OLA wanted. We will continue to audit all bus routes moving forward, as we have, but we will be sure to improve our documentation process of these audits in the future. Finding eight had to do with payments to bus contractors. They want us to consider using a return on investment to calculate our per-vehicle allotments to bus contractors, have bus contractors document their maintenance costs as the basis for paying bus contractors a maintenance rate, and consider deducting fuel tax rates or fuel tax credits from payments to bus contractors. We said we would consider each of these options. However, we also noted that we've observed a marked decrease in community members wanting to become school bus contractors, as well as some of our existing contractors choosing to get out of the bus business. So we were hesitant to make any changes that would decrease the current rate of pay. We made it clear that we feel we must support our bus contractors and continue to pay them at a competitive rate. And just to reiterate what Micah had said, we had zero findings from our financial statement audit. I don't believe we've ever had any since I've been there the last 17 years. We had no findings from our single audit, which is a very difficult audit. Most school systems do have at least one finding, and we had the third least findings from the state, so.
All right, council comments?
On your defense about the school buses?
Yes, sir.
That's the same audit they've been doing for years.
Yeah, it's in every audit.
Every audit in every county, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
It's never changed.
Yep.
It's never changed.
If you look at Worcester Counties last time, it's the same thing, and ours in 2014 has the same, but you're correct. They don't understand the rural route, that 50%, you can't do 100% busing because of the rural routes.
And I think one of the problems is, they never ask the contractor, they told you to document the maintenance of their contractors. They never interview none of the contractors when they do these audits, and they would know the maintenance of them.
All right. You're correct.
Good point.
Thank you. Mr. Hastings?
Yeah, how long before we, we being the Wacomiko Schools or the county as a whole, are attacked for some sort of ransomware or, you know, something along those lines? I know that happened in Baltimore County a couple, five weeks ago. So do we have a current plan in place to respond with what we're going to do, if and when, or probably should be when that happens?
So Bob Lang is not here with us today. He's our Director of Technology, but I can tell you that he's very much on top of it. We've been in steady communication with the Maryland State Department of Education about what the steps that we need to be taking to ensure against that risk, and Bob is very much on top of it. I don't know if anyone has any other specifics to add to that.
Just that his team does a really good job of educating the staff and students of Wacomiko County to make sure that they're knowledgeable and vigilant on what they click on and report anything that's suspicious that they receive through our email system.
Good question. Mr. Cannon?
Regarding the audit, how would you say, do they give you some idea at all as to how this audit compares with how they've, what they found in other schools throughout the state?
I think, as Micah indicated, we were very pleased. Now, I think I even said in an email to you all, I'd love to have no findings. But I think based upon the last audit here and compared to other systems across the state, we're one of the lowest number of findings in the state, and ours are pretty consistently procedural findings. So what was the range, Micah, seven?
It was the range in the findings for all the 24 school systems in Maryland was between seven findings and 20, and we had eight. So I would also say that the letter that they used to introduce the audit report is a form letter. We were a little bit disappointed in the language, because they, as they said to us in person, but not in writing, they really don't recognize all the right things that you're doing. Their job is to point out otherwise, so they just use that form letter for every audit, so it really doesn't recognize the type of audit that we feel like we had, which was really positive.
They did mention in the exit interview that it was one of the better ones they've seen.
Very good.
Any more comments? Okay, moving on.
Okay, our last item, which is our return-to-school action plan, and I have a very short presentation just to take you through, just a combination of some of the slides we've used in board meetings to update the community on what we're doing. So just a review, we started our school year virtually, as everyone is aware, and we did that for a lot of reasons, not just safety, but the need for consistency for students and staff to really become more confident in what we're doing in our virtual program. Then we began to bring, even before the 19th of October, some small groups of students in, but on the October 19th, we brought pre-kindergarten students in who chose to come back four days a week. On the 26th of October, we brought kindergarten students in, again, those who chose to, two days a week, which is hybrid in order to be able to accommodate all the students and remain within the six feet of social distancing, and then on the 9th of October, grades one and two. And then the original plan, as you'll see on the second line there, was to continue with that rollout of grade levels through high school coming back in the second semester. But we returned to virtual learning on November the 18th, all students being virtual. And the next slide shows you, a slide that was used at the board meeting where the board supported my recommendation to return to virtual learning. And this just shows you, or reminds you and the public, the metrics that have been provided to us by, they were actually provided and rolled out in the governor's press conference jointly between the Maryland Department of Health and the Maryland State Department of Education, that shows to, the two critical metrics that they ask us to monitor in terms of the state, or in terms of the safe return to school. So we first look at the positivity rate, and we go to the left side of the matrix. If we're less than 5%, we go to the right side of the matrix if we're more than 5%. We then look at the new case rate, and we're looking at anywhere between, and it's hard for me to read, but we're really looking at the magic number of 15 per 100,000 on either side that helps us decide what is the safe return for students. And then at the bottom, it talks, it suggests to school systems that you really need to be reassessing if you see a major change in those two metrics over a two-week period of time. And so on the right-hand side, you'll see what we had been experiencing prior to that board meeting for the last two weeks, where we'd been under 5% with positivity rate, but the, I'm sorry, I can't read that from here, but a date in November where we went to the red, which was above 5%. And, thank you. And then we were, old age, it's terrible, and then we were, on the right-hand side, you see the new case rate when we were above that 15 cases per 100,000, and there were very few days at that point where we had actually been under that. So that, the board supported the decision to return to virtual for students. So, next slide, please. So I included this slide because I wanted to show you that we were all really, really very disappointed, and I should have said this in the very beginning. We want our students back in school. There is no question. And we saw such amazing things happening in our classrooms just in the short period of time, that our students were able to return. Mr. Malone talks about the situation with his grandson and how much better he's doing now, because he had an opportunity to meet the students in his classroom. So we want that return as soon as possible. What you see here in this picture is a teacher who's actually teaching both the students face-to-face as well as virtually. So our teachers have just done amazing work. She's using a webcam and a microphone so that she's able to meet the needs of both the students who chose to come back hybrid and are still, who chose to remain virtual. So we want to get back to that as soon as we possibly can, as soon as it is safe and the metrics return to a little bit more normal rates. So on that, at that board meeting, next slide, please. So at that board meeting, we were seeing, and again, I can't, let me, I think what I need to do is look at my, up close, since I can't see that. But what you see here is what we now have on our website. We keep a dashboard so that the community can stay with us in monitoring where we are. At that board meeting, it was determined not only that we would return to virtual, but that we would be looking for seven consecutive days of better metrics, meaning below 5% or lower, and 15 per 100,000 or lower. And so this was a snapshot, I believe, from the 8th of December, where you see where we are in terms of those metrics. And we have a ways to go, as you know. These are the community metrics in Wacomiko County, not just specific to the schools. So as I said, there is a dashboard. You can actually click on that link there in, and I'm not asking you to do that, Lynn, but you could click on that and see. Today, those metrics are, I wrote this down, today, those metrics are, we are at 7.33% positivity and 38.47 per 100,000 new cases in our community. So again, we're very hopeful that we'll start to see more of a downhill trend. You can see the positivity rate is starting to move in the right direction. So next slide, please. So what we decided at that board meeting was that following the winter break, which will be from December 21st to January 1st, and if you want to go to the next slide, that on the 4th of January, we will return all students to virtual learning. And then on the 11th is when students will return to, or excuse me, when teachers will return pre-K to 8 to their classrooms, given appropriate metrics. And then the following week, January the 19th, pre-K to 8 students, again, given positive metrics, will begin in-person hybrid learning. We're very hopeful that that will happen, and that our high school students would then return at the beginning of the semester, the second semester, which was the original plan.
Why the difference between high school and the grades eight below?
The original plan always was for, in fact, Dr. Briggs, do you want to join us up here?
You can go to the podium.
Thank you. Yep. The original plan always was for high school students to return at the semester break, a cleaner, a cleaner break, a cleaner opportunity for students to start new courses in person.
Yeah, one of the complications with the semester-based schedule is because we have many dual enrollment students who have conflicting schedules at either Warwick or SVU, and so it was just a clean break there from first to second semester.
Okay, thank you.
The next slide is a slide that we have continued to show, in fact, on all of our, all of these slides are on our website. This just reminds the community what we're doing and what goes into all of these decisions. Parents, first of all, have an opportunity to choose whether they are hybrid or virtual, and will continue to have that choice. Then they need to let us know whether they want bus transportation, because obviously we need to consider how we are spacing students on buses for safety reasons. And we do try to accommodate and bring families in together, which allows us to fit more students on the same bus or in the same seat if they're family members, so that helps by organizing students in that way. And then again, our teachers and staff members return to the school building a week before students do. The school day, and I really want to emphasize this first bullet here, we remind our students and our teachers every day to take home their laptops and their chargers, because anything can change on any given day. And in fact, with our new ability to do virtual learning, if we have an inclement weather day, we will continue with virtual learning from home, so students would need to have...
I was going to ask that question, like, keep getting notifications of bad weather.
That's right.
So how do you handle the snow day? Are you just going to continue?
That's correct.
Good.
So we'll be serving, in a hybrid model, we'll be serving meals in students' classrooms. Of course, we do have meals available to all of our students. We are now a community eligibility program school system, so we are able to serve meals to all students free of charge. And we're continuing to do that curbside, trying to remember, is it 15,000 meals a week we're serving?
A little over 15,000 meals a week at 27 sites across the county.
Right. And the hybrid model for us continues to be two days a week with asynchronous learning the other days. And then the right side of that chart just shows all the health and safety measures that we are following with mask-wearing, social distancing, hand washing, et cetera, and contact tracing and so forth. So, next slide. We continue to have our family helpline that families continue to call to ask for assistance with technology. We started out with an instructional and a technology helpline, and most parents were just communicating directly with their teachers, which is exactly what we want to happen. So we've continued, though, with the technology helpline that is available. There are translation services as well there. The next slide just shows you that we're continuing with the meals, as already mentioned, and shows you how that information is also available in other language, Spanish and Haitian Creole. And then the last slide, or the last thing I wanted to share with you, is a, and I know you can't read this, but it's a copy of a letter that was sent. If you happen to know someone who gets my calls to parents and community and staff members, this is a letter that went out jointly between our Teachers Association, our Administrators Association, the Board of Ed, and administrators, and the central office, just telling our community how much we want our students back in school, and the way to do that is for everyone to follow the protocols that are important in terms of safety. So that's where we are. We're very hopeful, and if everybody cooperates, then hopefully we'll start to see those metrics go down. And I heard Senator Caroza mention earlier, a really important factor will be if our staff are able to be vaccinated early on, that will be very helpful as well.
Good point. Yes, thank you. Council comments? Mr. Davis?
It probably don't deal with that. You said earlier that you see more virtual coming on later on when schools go back, and then you just said about the snow day. So you see, like, when this is all over, we're going back to school, and it does snow, would you be able to convert, like, instead of having a snow day, it'd be a virtual day?
We think that's, at least we're doing that for this year, and then years in the future, we'll certainly cross that bridge when we come to it. Some of it will be dependent upon the availability of technology for students and our ability to maintain that, those devices and hotspots, or the availability of greater broadband in our community in the future, but yes, we would hope so.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Mr. Cannon?
How has it been working with the Wacomiko County Education Association and what their needs are for the teachers and what you feel you're trying to do on your part? Has it worked out well?
I believe, we are working very collaboratively. We have weekly calls that all of the assistant superintendent... superintendents are on as well as our human resources staff with the president of the association and the Uniserv rep from the Maryland State Education Association. And we, we talk about joint issues. They raise concerns to us about any specific issues that they might have related to our return to our buildings. And so, so we, right now that, it's working very well.
Yeah, and hopefully the vaccine will make that a smoother transition as well. Any workaround that you feel that you need to start developing for extracurricular activities and sports yet in January?
Right now, we're on hold. We want our student athletes to be safe as well. I think today actually is a Board of Controls meeting for the Bayside Conference or MPSA.
Yes, State level.
Okay. So, there's ongoing conversations about how we may be able to return to athletics. I know that, and you all probably heard from those parents as well.
Absolutely.
That there are many, many parents.
We are.
Actually probably got more emails about that than returning to instruction.
That's important.
But it is important. And we know it's important for students' mental health and wellbeing. So, that's, that is a priority as well, as long as we can ensure that students are safe.
That's good to hear. Mr. Hastings?
As far as educator health and wellbeing, I'm hearing that we have more teachers leaving the profession after all the challenges this year, obviously. Is that true? Is that panning out? Or do we know if there's anything significant there? And then second part of that is, are we, I'm sure knowing what you all already do, you're already putting a best plan in place to make sure that we're addressing any of the educators' health and wellbeing. But anything you want to say as far as the amount of folks of any other educators we've lost? Is that more than normal? And then what we're doing to make sure that teachers feel welcome and?
I would say, and I'll let Dr. Briggs chime in too, but I would say that we have teachers who are retiring, who had been considering it for a while and have decided, you know, it's probably time. More so than teachers just outright leaving the profession, especially mid-year. What will happen at the end of the year, I can't speak to. But we've only had a few teachers who have left us mid-year. And honestly, it has been challenging to find replacements for those teachers. So, not only did we already have a teacher shortage, but this does present more, a greater issue for us. So, yes, we're constantly working on, Dr. Briggs has regular calls with Salisbury University and, and our other institutions of higher learning to make sure that we are building that pipeline the best that we can and encouraging others to go into education when it's, right now, it is very challenging for our educators.
Any more questions or comments? Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Christmas.
Thank you. Happy holidays to all of you as well.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Briggs.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have our discussion to support the Horizon Program for a letter. And then I want to ask you, we got the two closed sessions. It's getting late. Does anybody have any objection to postponing the closed work sessions until January 5th?
I'm fine.
You're okay?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll finish up with this.
Zoom meeting anyhow.
Thank you, Dr. Hanlon.
Thank you, Dr. Hanlon.
Okay.
Okay.
Take care, Dr. Hanlon.
Bye-bye.
Happy holidays.
Hey there. So, where does the council want to go with this? What's the discussion?
I have four brief remarks if you want me to-
Sorry?
I have four brief remarks if you want me to say any of those as you guys are getting these handouts.
Yeah, you can.
Okay. Okay, so again, thank you for allowing myself and Acting Mayor Julie Glance to present to you just four real quick items I wanted to cover. What the city is looking for today is a letter of support for state enabling legislation for market rate residential development. Included in the items that you have is the letter that we would be, a letter of support that our acting mayor is sending for, to the Eastern Shore delegation. This was referenced by Delegate Anderton earlier when you met with him. Number two, we'd like the council to consider tax abatement legislation in the near future to help incentivize large-scale residential development in downtown Salisbury. The referred option is the Horizon Program. As previously discussed, option two would be a modified Horizon Program, and option three would be another incentive program. We do implore the timeliness of these decisions. For the letter of support, our goal is to have this at the beginning of the Maryland General Assembly session. So, the sooner we can have our letters of support sent and the legislation drafted and presented, the faster this will get moved through the state. And then from the local legislation side, if the Comico County chooses to move forward with an abatement program, it just helps our local developers and investors decide if they are going to invest in Salisbury so they can start the lineup and finalize their financing and ultimately start construction. You know, why Horizon Program? I submitted two endorsement letters that came. One of them specifically highlights the Salisbury market. And Salisbury is a tertiary marketplace. It's a risky place to invest large-scale money. So, you have to be more lucrative if you want that type of private investment to come here. And then also downtown Salisbury does not have any large-scale residential developments. So, it's an unknown market. So, again, there's a little bit more risk there. And then the final document is just a comparison of long-term investment. It's a side-by-side comparison of what would happen in 40 years if the county picked the Horizon Program as is or did a modified program complementary to the enterprise zone. So, 20-year tax credit versus a 10-year tax credit. If that same investment development decided to cut back its investment from 20 million to 10 million as a result of a reduced incentive, there would be a significant tax abatement savings. The tax credit wouldn't be as high. But the county would also be foregoing $1.6 million of potential tax revenue. So, just understanding the comparison of what $10 million versus a $20 million development project looks like over 40 years. Those are my comments at this time.
All right. Counsel. Mr. Hastings?
So, if I hear you right, this is a two-part, you're asking first of all for support for the county to, or for a letter of, a letter from us to go to the state to just give enabling legislation. And then the second part of that is for the county to consider its own program, whether that be a residential, easy residential program or a Horizon Program or, or a third programs that yet to be determined or what we might like, right? I'm imagining there's probably a little bit of a, probably folks want to be speedy and exponentially try to get this out on the, on the developer's side, I'm assuming. But just taking this in parts, I guess, is the first part. Mr. President, I do think that, I, I do agree that this, you know, going forward, at least with a letter of support for the, you know, for the, the county and the city to go ahead and, and at least get approval for what other jurisdictions around the state already have the ability to do. I think it's a positive to add Comico among those jurisdictions to then be able to also create a program. But first and foremost, we've got to be able to actually get, the state of Maryland has to enable us to be able to even do that. So, as much as possible, I think I'd like us to move in that direction. I do also then, I, you know, I feel like I want to have a better understanding of what a county program could really look like and what would be the most equitable and, and agreeable among all of us here as well as the business community.
Okay. Counsel. Mr. Holloway?
Is there any other programs like this where?
Excuse me. Is there any other programs like this in Salisbury where a developer gets 100% tax credit? Tax break, whatever you want to call it.
In Salisbury, Maryland, is there another 100% property tax credit similar to Horizon Program? There's not.
So, this is, this is all new?
This program is new.
So, from what I understand, our county taxes and our, the city taxes are basically the same. So, if you have a $500 tax bill in the county, you have a $500 tax bill in the city. It's pretty much on the level, right?
More or less.
Relate to that because he owns property in both jurisdictions. But, so, what this is, is per year for the first five years is about a $360,000 tax credit per year, right? Tax break?
For a $20 million project, I believe so. Yep.
For a $20 million project. Okay. Okay, that's it for, I've got some more questions. But has there been a study to see if there is any more student housing needed? From what I understand, there's been an overabundance of student housing, not counting this year now because we know we have COVID. But I was looking up the orchards, and they've never really ever been full.
The, the city is not creating studies for what is being built. We're interested in the size and scope of what is being built. Independent developers, it is their decision on what they choose to put there. So, we have not looked at specific projects, but-
I'll just add that, you know, this, this program is for all residential development in the high-rise capacity or, you know, five stories or above, so to speak. So, it's not just for student housing. And all of these developments have to do their own market studies before they get bank financing. So, it's got to make sense for the bank. So, they wouldn't come here if they couldn't make it work.
Does it not concern you that once this is passed, you'll see other developers? I see we have a developer in the, in the audience today that'll be stepping forward and wanting a tax break such as this. I know we have parameters set on this, but like you said last time, this could be changed at any time. So, does that concern you if we go down this road, that you're going to have an influx of people saying, hey, you did this for these folks, we want this?
I wouldn't say it's concerning. We're interested in continuing dialogue with developers, whether it's residential here, commercial, or, or any facet of, of opportunity that exists. Right now, we're focused on the signature-style projects. But we're, we're open to furthering conversations at anything that helps. People want to invest and have economic development within our community.
All right. Mr. Holloway mentioned college students. And one of the council members mentioned earlier today about enrollment and the colleges are on the decline. And someone sent us a document last week about Salisbury University is trending, going down, has been going down, I want to guess 10 years, the past 10 years?
That's, that's not accurate.
That's not correct.
This year, enrollment is down. I'm on the alumni board, and we just had an admissions meeting.
I didn't, I can't hear you.
I'm on the alumni board, and we have admissions.
Can you lift up the mic?
It's catching it. I, we had an alumni board meeting this, this past week. I'm on the admissions committee. Enrollment is not going down. Over the last 10 years, it's been going up over the 10-year average. This year, obviously, enrollment is down because of COVID. But I don't think anybody can make any statement on what the future will do for college housing. But again, this project is not just for college housing. It is for residential, multifamily, whatever anybody wants to build that has beds in it.
I was under the impression that the Ross Building was for student housing.
The Ross Project is. But again, we are talking about seven properties in, in the downtown core that we'd like to see residential mixed-use development on.
Okay. Mr. Hastings?
Would you say, what, what happens in your, from the city perspective, what happens when you put this amount of individuals? You have a lot of folks who would occupy these buildings, right? What's the, what's the, what comes after that? When you get a bunch of people in a bunch of buildings in a, in a small compact area, what happens around that? Can-
Everything.
Yeah, it was seven days a week, 24/7. As an, if you've come down to downtown Salisbury on a Saturday or Sunday morning, it's a ghost town because people aren't waking up downtown in the capacity or the numbers that we're hoping for. We would like our restaurants to be open for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, our, our retailers to be full and have an open seven days a week. It just generates turn because you have people waking up downtown.
Which generates tax dollars for all of us.
And just a quick comment, kind of echoing Councilman Hastings' comments earlier. I mean, there's two parts to this. And I mean, you're sitting here today, and I think it's what we need to be focusing on is support for enabling legislation. You know, we can't do anything if we don't have enabling legislation. That's really just adding a tool in our toolbox for economic investment in, in our area. And, and actually, and Mr. Holloway's question about do we have anything, what there's tax abatements, I mean, the business enterprise zone does give you tax abatement. I mean, it's a different program. But the irony of that is, you know, we get those all the time. We unanimously approve them all the time. And, but they do not come, none of those projects are coming to us because that's the incentive that made them come. It's usually always an afterthought. You know, their business is doing well. They added some employees or they expand some space, and now they qualify for the business enterprise tax credit, and then they come. Whereas, this is something to initiate and provide incentive for development, you know, which development in our downtown benefits everyone in the county. And that's the idea behind it. You know, the idea is, we, we hope it encourages people to do it. I mean, that's the way the program is designed. And one of the good things about the Horizon Program, you know, it has sunset provisions. It has provisions in there. You know, it doesn't go on forever. It's, it's a, it's a program to get its, you know, the initial incentive. And I had said this at the last meeting, that's pretty much for downtown redevelopments is downtown redevelopment 101. It almost always comes from some kind of incentive governmentally because the risk is too great out of the gates for usually that initial couple of developers. But if you can get those success stories, you get that help in the beginning, that's what then attracts. But I just want us to remember or focus, I do want us to focus on the fact that, you know, supporting the enabling legislation, to me, is, you know, positive all the way around. Like I say, it gives us another tool, and, you know, we have to come back. We've got to decide, you know, are we going to just mirror what the city has done, which I think is a good program? Or are we going to have any revisions? But that's a conversation for tomorrow.
And just to echo this, that point real quick, market rate residential development, enabling legislation with what's been provided in your packet and the way it is written, you know, it's an opportunity that a program could be set up to help solve some of your water sewer issues throughout the county. You can incentivize that type of development through this state enabling legislation, where right now, I don't think you can. So, think about the bigger picture, most importantly with the letter of support. And then if we want to dive down deep into this style tax abatement, you guys can take your time on that if you need to.
Mr. Holloway?
Oh, okay. I'll just, you know, just what we've heard today, okay? We had our legislators here, okay? We're going to get passed down more cost possibly from the state, okay? We had the Board of Ed, Board of Education. They said that they're not going to get as much for school funding. You know, if you build all these apartments, you know, you're going to need more, more funding for schools. You're not collecting taxes. Bill mentions incentives. I agree with incentives, Bill. This is 100% tax break for five years. This is, you know, I mean, this isn't just an incentive. This is a giveaway.
But if it doesn't happen, you get zero.
I know. But do we give away our taxes? I mean, I mean, I believe in low taxes as much as anybody. I've fought that ever since I've been here. But wow. I mean, I mean, this is-
We don't give away, let's get, we don't give away anything. The taxes that are being paid now, that continues. If the projects get done and they do this, then they get that abatement. But gradually over time, those taxes do get paid.
So, should we do that, should we do that for the whole county? I mean, why not?
No.
I had a farmer out here today that can't get his beans out because it's raining. Should we give him tax, free taxes because he can't harvest his crops? I mean, it's the same difference. There's not, there's not much difference to it.
We pulled back all the impact fees for any residential development. So, we actually have done that in a different, in a different light. We don't currently pay impact, the, impact fees like we used to. We don't-
Well, I, I heard our fellow councilman today during, when we were talking to the liquor dispensary that we should not create a- liquor dispensary, that we should not create an unfair tax advantage for other businesses. And this is just another unfair tax advantage for anybody else that wants to build something out of this zone.
It wasn't the term "create an unfair tax advantage," it was allowing government to compete against the free enterprise system. That was the difference.
And that's, and that's what we're doing.
No.
Yes, we are.
What we're doing here is we're trying to create incentives, Joe, which is what everyone has always done, is similar to what Mr. McCain said. We passed the enterprise zone.
The enterprise zone is completely different than this, John. I've voted for the enterprise zone for years. I know what the enterprise zone is. It's completely different. You know, you're not talking about giving away two or $3 million a year with the enterprise zone for, for one building. This is one building we're talking about. They, you know, this is the information we've been supplied. This was what's in our brief book. This is what we got on our table today. It's about that one building, and that's why it's on our table.
If you want to talk about one building, what we are talking about, Joe, we're talking about a piece of property right now that brings in around 19, probably about $19,000 a year. By the time this project's completed, we'll be bringing in $196,000 a year. That'll pay for more than the schoolchildren you're worried about. That's the difference here.
They won't be bringing in anything, John, you're not going to be collecting taxes on it. How do you say?
You will, by the time this project is completed, by the time we get through the schedule, it'll be $196,000 a year. You can roll the dice, Joe, and do absolutely nothing.
And for five years, they won't be paying anything, John?
No, they will. They'll be paying the base ta, they'll be paying the taxes on the base rate that it exists right now.
Yeah, a piece of vacant land.
Right. And, and Joe, if we do nothing, they'll be paying that the next five years and the next 10.
If somebody, if the, if the need is there, somebody will build a building there, John. You know, Andy made the comment at the last meeting, that we will make up revenues by increasing the assessment of other buildings close to that. So do you not think that's unfair? So somebody gets a five-year tax abatement, well, it's actually a 20-year, you know, it's graduated. Somebody gets a five-year tax abatement, but all the other buildings around downtown Salisbury gets assessed at more to make up the difference? So is that, is that, you know, we talked about fairness in taxation this morning, too, when the legislators were here.
We had this conversation before, the businesses downtown are in favor of this, the Chamber of Commerce is in favor of this, Joe. You know, somehow or other, we have to be pro-business, period. And pro-business sometimes means you have to create incentives. I know that when we all ran for, for office, the last two times we ran for office, and if you can remember when we were in a recession, the only thing we talked about is how we were going to be pro-business, and how we were going to, we were going to do whatever we could to create economic development in this community. This is an economic development driver. These buildings go in, you'll see the jobs created, you'll see the people coming down, and you'll, you'll literally see a vibrant downtown. Salisbury's gone a long way in improving Salisbury, and that's been very beneficial, and will be very beneficial to Wycomico County. And this is just one more tool that we will have, that'll allow us to benefit industries that want to come to this, this area.
So, but you want to give up the taxes to do it?
You're not giving up taxes. What you're doing is you're forgiving, you're forgiving the total taxes that might be imposed until the project is completely completed through the, through the schedule that you create. You have to look further than five or 10 years down the road, Joe. We're supposed to be looking at this 15 and 20 years, is what's going to happen, and that's what this creates. I, I just don't understand, it is no different than the enterprise zone, except that it's residential instead of commercial.
There's a lot of difference, John, because enterprise zone isn't 100% tax break.
Joe, if you want to get into that discussion, that's fine, and let's look at the 100%, let's look at it maybe 90%, or look at 80. We can adjust that, but we're not even getting off square one, which is really the problem here. I would have thought that today, we would have had a letter prepared, so that we could discuss it in a work session. And I thought we would have some format of a schedule prepared, so that we would be able to discussion this work session, instead of, you know, regurgitating the same information over and over again here.
Also, the fact, you know, or the comment, that somebody else is going to come along, well, that hasn't happened. I mean, these projects are still sitting there, we, we got a vacant lot right dead center on the river, that's now, I mean, I've been in the real estate business for 32 years, and that lot's been sitting there vacant for 30 years, and been talked about being developed, but no one will pull that trigger, because there's, that incentive is just not there. No one's coming along and quote, of filling these gaps, so, so we're getting nothing.
Mr. Hastings, you had a comment?
Well, I just want to say that, you know, first and foremost, we're here for a letter of support, is what it says on the agenda for the, you know, to, to move forward with this legislation, which, you know, we have copies of, we did receive this ahead of time, and we have copies here now. I think it's really important to note that the city of Salisbury has done its part. This, this isn't, you know, this isn't Mardella coming forward, this isn't Willards, or, or Pittsville, or others, you know? The city of Salisbury has real, is really something special, and they've done their part. What they're saying is they want to come in here, and they want the county to support what they are worth, so they have been working so hard to get to. And the downtown redevelopment, I mean, we all remember urban Salisbury from 20, you know, years ago, we, you know, we, I've spent my entire life listening about what, what is it like to get somebody down downtown, what would that be? We literally have, we have downtown business owners right here, who need folks downtown, they need that density, you know? What I'm saying is what, you know, Salisbury, Maryland has done their part when it comes to trying to make sure that they have, they have dotted all their, crossed all the Ts, dotted their Is, they have put together a plan and a path forward, and they are working with their business owners, so that they can have something special down here, that they can make Salisbury look the way that Salisbury, that they want it to look. And as they, as the councilman for the core part of city of Salisbury, I mean, I got to say, we've, you know, yeah, we have, we have plenty of space, there's, there's homes all around me next to the college, where, you know, I can look out my dining room dinner window and see three homes that, you know, we could have single-family homes in there and not renters again, you know? And there's a lot more that we could do with putting more individuals downtown. This is what we've talked about our entire life. Salisbury, the city of Salisbury has done their part, the business leaders have spoke up, and they've done their part. I say, this is our opportunity to at least take a step one, which is to at least support up, you know, this, this general effort going forward with the General Assembly, and then let's come back and make sure that we have a, you know, a clear plan in place, which we can change these numbers, it's up to us, you know, this is our program if we, if we choose to go forward, but for here, the here and now, let's support what Salisbury is doing, and God bless them, they've done a great job, and they deserve it.
Mr. Holloway.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes, exactly. Let's let Ms. Ackley speak.
Sorry, I didn't mean to scare the one there. But I wholeheartedly support the city in what they clearly have a mission to do. I just, I don't think the county is ready to move on this. We just, we haven't done enough research, we haven't vetted this, and unless we're going to do something, I don't feel good about passing legislation that's just going to sit there. That just doesn't seem like it's a good use of our resources, and so, I mean, I 100% support the city in what they want to do, I just don't think that the county at this time is ready. And I have had several questions from business leaders in the District 2 community. I could sit here and go through all of them with you, but it's, I mean, it's really pointless, because this is, this is what you've developed.
Thank you, Ms. Ackley. Mr. Holloway.
Well, in regards to Mrs. Ackley's statement, you know, we don't have any control over what the city does, they can do what they want to do. But as far as Wycomico County, if you want to give a tax incentive, give it to everybody in Wycomico County, every taxpayer, the taxpayers that's been paying taxes for the past 40 or 50 years, you know? The folks that have just bought their home, that has to write a tax check, you know, and they're suffering because of COVID, you know, everybody wants to bring up because of COVID, so we'll say there's a lot of people out here that aren't working, you know? Landlords may, may not have to charge as much rent if property taxes in Wycomico County weren't what they were. So if the, we want to get a tax incentive, let's give it to everybody in Wycomico County, not a select few, which we are doing.
I need you to define.
Mr. McCain?
Incentive versus tax reduction is a very important difference that needs to be maybe clarified. You're not, you're, are you incentivizing living in Wycomico County through a tax reduction? Is that what you're saying everybody needs, or you're saying you should incentivize economic development?
I don't think you came here to ask us questions, did you? I think we're the ones that were supposed to be having questions. But I'll, I'll answer it. I hear all the time about people living in Worcester County or Sussex County, because taxes are cheaper. So I'll answer that question.
If I could just quickly, I was listening earlier to, to your meeting, and Mr. Cannon made mention of the same thing, folks are building in Sussex County, they're not, they're not building here. This is a tool, forget what we're talking about downtown. If you, if you don't come along with us on this letter of support, that's all we're asking for today. Ms. Ackley, I hope you're, you're listening as well. That's all we're asking for today. If you don't do that, because you haven't thought through the, the numbers, or you want some more time on that, I completely respect that, and that's your prerogative, but you'll have to go back and have the same conversation over with our delegation, when we could just add your name after ours, and make this, you know, a smoother process, and, and have that tool in your toolbox, like Mr. McCain said, and you can figure out how you want to do it, where it is, if it's in District 2, if it's in your district, if it's in downtown, it doesn't matter. Again, that's, that's your prerogative, and we don't, we don't, it's up to you. So again, I, I hope that you'll, you'll sign on to the letter.
And that's, that's a good segue into the comment I've been trying to make here for about 10 minutes. Mr. Dodd, I mean, I'd like for us just to, from each council person, get a consensus if we want to do a letter of support or not.
We're going to. That's, that was the reason that we were here for the work session. I didn't know the city was coming, but anyway, glad you're here. Joe, were you getting ready to say something?
Well, Mrs. Glantz said we'd have to go back to the delegation, we wouldn't have to go back to the delegation to lower tax rate in Wycomico County. We can do that on our own.
You can do that on your own, go ahead, please. I'm a taxpayer, I'd love that.
Joe, you're talking about giving money back to the taxpayers. We have a 2% revenue cap in Wycomico County. You increase the property taxes to the degree that this project will increase the property taxes, we will be forced to lower property tax rates throughout the county. So yes, this would be a perfect project to give money back to the taxpayers of Wycomico County.
That's not going to happen anytime.
Mr. Dodd, can you do a roll call consent?
I'm doing that.
So we can get beyond this.
Just to, Mr. Dodd.
If you don't mind, if, if council members are talking, I think it's up to the president.
But we're, we're not talking about what we're here for, we're here for consent letter.
We're here for two purposes.
You're talking about raising taxes and lowering taxes, that is not what we're here for. On the agenda is set a consent letter to support Salisbury.
I understand.
You're going into raising taxes, lowering taxes, we're not here for that. We need to do, go consent on a letter.
I can appreciate that, and I, I want to move forward with that as well, but you have to understand, there's two, there are two things we have to do here, and there's a sense of urgency on both. One is the letter of support, and the other one is figuring out what schedule we're going to do.
We can do that at a later date.
I understand.
That's not on the agenda now.
I understand, but I think points need to be made sometimes, and I'd leave it up to the president, the county to make that decision.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Moving forward with the roll call, what, first, let's define the letter. What is the letter going to say? Are we supporting the city of Salisbury doing their tax abatement?
That's it.
Okay.
And, but the county's asking for enabling, that, that ability for enabling legislation for the county?
Yes.
That doesn't commit to the county.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Davis?
As long as it's not committing us to the letter.
Right. I, I agree with that. Mr. David, or McCain, yes or no?
Right, I'm for it, yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Holloway? Ms. Ackley?
To clarify, this is a letter of support for the city, but not including the county in legislation, correct?
Correct.
No, she's incorrect.
No, it's for the city and the county.
It includes the city and the county.
No, I'm not in favor of that at this time.
It's enabling, it does, it is enabling.
Or enabling legislation.
Okay. What'd you say, Nicole?
Not at this time.
Okay. Josh Hastings?
Yes, I support.
Yes?
Yeah.
John Cannon?
Yes.
And the chair votes no. So there's enough votes for a letter of support for the city, so.
For the city and the county.
Well.
Good to go forward with enabling legislation to the state legislation.
That's right, but it's not committing us to anything.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I would like to add a couple, because I thought in the last meeting, I'd made a request that we have a letter prepared for this meeting today, so that we could review a letter in a work session. I had also said that I thought that we needed to get started in some type of structure, as far as the schedule was concerned. I don't see either one of those having been done over the last two weeks.
Right. We, we weren't ready for that, but thank you for asking.
No, Larry, hold on a second. What I'm getting at here is that I would hope that, because we're just kicking a can down the road, I would hope that in two weeks, when we come back here, we'll have this as